And we'll start with the roll call, and then we will jump into the invocation and pledge of allegiance led by Councilmember Gendol.
Councilman Gendol.
Hi. Mark here.
Councilman Leonard.
Did he say hi or I?
He said I.
Present.
Councilman Rixby.
Here.
Mayor Per temporary Daley.
Here.
Mayor Duper.
Hi.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Gendol.
All right, all rise. Starting off with the pledge of allegiance, ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So today I would like to proclaim again the prayers that we had said last time. Thank you Almighty for the successful elections that we've had and the efforts that this whole country has gone through over the past few weeks. Today we are here on our agenda, we see that we will be celebrating some of the hard work that our men and women have done on the first line in protecting the members of our nation, of our state, and of our city. And we pray for their health and for their well-being. Amen.
Mr. City Manager, are there any items to be added or deleted?
Yes, sir, I would like to delete number seven.
Are there any comments from the public? I look over at the IT shop to see if there's anybody online raising their hand. No, no comments from the public. We will, I'm working off of the first agenda version without the proclamation, so can we just move into the proclamation, or did you have that next? I didn't see, I know you did a supplemental, right? Agenda?
The addendum, it's under, yeah, it should be number one, under the scheduled items. It should have been on the front of your agenda packet.
Yeah, I'm electronic, I'm looking at my original one.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, item number one, and this got slipped in, well, actually, we talked about it about a month ago, and when we were putting the agenda together, there were a couple of folks that were out and off, and we initially kind of got a little confused, so I apologize. But it is here, and it is signed, and we are very proud as a city to be part of this, to recognize the National Nurse Practitioner Week, which is already going on, started November 8th through the 14th of 2020. And I'll just read, there's a lot of whereases, and, so whereas, "Serving as trusted healthcare providers for patients in our community and state, nurse practitioners provide high-quality primary, acute, and specialty care services while focusing on health promotion, disease prevention, health education, and counseling, guiding patients to make smarter health and lifestyle choices every day." And, whereas, "Nurse practitioners are highly skilled practitioners with advanced education and clinical training, building upon their initial registered nurse preparation, who work to expand access to care in underserved communities and end health disparities in healthcare." And, whereas, "There are more than 290,000 licensed nurse practitioners in the United States and 27,000 in California, working tirelessly to diagnose and treat patients with COVID-19 and to combat community spread nationwide while grieving nurse practitioner colleagues who have lost their lives during the pandemic." And, whereas, "More than five decades of research demonstrates the high quality of care provided by nurse practitioners and the confidence that patients have in the nurse-practitioner delivered healthcare that is evidenced by more than 1 billion visits made annually to nurse practitioners across the country." And, whereas, "Better utilization of nurse practitioners through modernized state laws and improved policies creates better health through a more accessible, efficient, cost-effective, and higher-quality healthcare system, with 22 states, the District of Columbia, Guam, and the Northern Mariana Islands having implemented full practice authority for nurse practitioners." And, whereas, "Leading governmental and policy entities, including the National Academy of Medicine, National Council of State Boards of Nursing, National Governors Association, and Federal Trade Commission, have taken notice of the benefits of nurse practitioners' full practice authority and have endorsed such a regulatory model." And, whereas, "In this year, 2020, we celebrate the International Year of the Nurse and the Midwife, Loma Linda is proud to recognize and honor the service of nurse practitioners in our city." Now therefore, I, Phil Duper, Mayor of the City of Loma Linda, on behalf of the entire city council, do hereby proclaim November 8th to 14th, 2020, National Nurse Practitioner Week in Loma Linda, and urge the residents of this community to recognize the countless contributions nurse practitioners have made over the past half-century and will continue to make on behalf of the health and well-being of citizens in our city. So if you'd like to come up, we have the official sign version.
Thank you very much. Rich, you appreciate it.
Put my mask on.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very, very much.
You could send that to, well, I'll.
I will. Send, let me know what to send.
You can, okay.
Would you like to make some remarks or something? You don't have to, if you'd like to.
I'm hard to, I'm hard to.
You don't have to, at all.
I just want to say thank you, just for the proclamation and for the acknowledgement of what your community and our role in healthcare, so I just want to say thank you very much.
Well, thank you very much, we are indebted to you and your service, so thank you.
If I could just comment briefly, I mean particularly in this era of a pandemic that we're dealing with, and all of us have profound thanks for the risks you take and the hard work you do. On a more personal level, my wife is a physician who works with nurse practitioners as well, and sometimes she wishes she had just been a nurse practitioner and hadn't dealt with all the harassment of being a physician, but, so thank you for your competence and your hard work very much.
Okay. Those are really neat when we get to do, through those type of causes, and we're obviously a very medically centric community here, so we're very proud to be able to participate. Moving on, there have been no disclosed conflicts of interest, so we will open up with the scheduled items, starting with the consent calendar.
I will move the consent calendar, but I would like to pull number four with the question.
Okay.
Would you like to pull six B for a question?
Six B. Okay. Mr. City Manager, was that it? Just those two?
I don't think the motion got a second.
Well, let's, let's.
Discuss them now?
Let's dispense with them first. Mr. City Manager, can you?
Mr. City Manager, I, I had, it looks like it's just a transfer of money, and I'm not worried about that, except I don't know where it's going or how much it is, and this was so abbreviated, and in my packet at least, I couldn't find any supporting documentation.
Is it number four, right?
Yes.
Yes, can you explain that?
As a document, it is true.
Can you come up to the.
My documentation went from three to five, so.
I'll provide you the document.
Okay.
So what happens is Firehouse Subs, which is in our community.
Can you read it and then explain it, and that'll be helpful to me.
Yes, Firehouse Subs, which is in our community, they like to give back to fire and law enforcement, and so they offer a grant, and every couple of years, we're allowed to apply for this grant. And we are coming up on some of our medical training equipment, is being outdated and not up to speed, so we wrote a grant for it, and we're getting $18,000 worth of equipment for that.
Very good, and how are we going to use it?
It's going to go towards CPR, for community CPR, as well as fire department CPR, our advanced cardiac life support training, and other such things, such as mannequins, and like the gunshot wound mannequins, that kind of stuff.
Okay, so it will enhance community emergency response activities and education that we're already involved with.
Absolutely, with COVID, we haven't done the outreach with the CPR like we'd like to. Once the COVID era is done, we're going to offer community CPR, that's the direction we're going with our, with our plan.
Okay, okay.
If you'd like, I can.
No, that's fine.
Okay.
That sounds good to me, I just needed to understand it a little bit because I had no clue after I read it.
We did receive a grant from them before.
The City Manager's pocket, that's where.
We did receive a grant from Firehouse Subs three years ago for personal protective equipment and AEDs.
Very good, thank you. I'll just throw in a couple of things, obviously, we have a Firehouse Subs here in town, and so it's local to us, they're big supporters of our community, and we have actually been supporters of theirs, kind of as well. If you go into a Firehouse Subs anywhere, you will see there's, there's fire, you know, clothing, I won't say apparatus.
Firehouse Subs is a brand.
Yes, it is a national brand.
I don't think I've ever been in one.
Yeah, there's right, right here at the corner of Mountain View and Barton.
Yeah, I've seen it, I just have.
So, great subs, I'll make a plug for them, great sandwiches, a great place, and a great family that operates the restaurant here in town. But my understanding is that a lot of fire departments take a lot of old, unused stuff that's, that's no longer viable, and, and, you know, whether it's turnout coats, things like that are up on their walls and whatnot, so we have contributed as a city, not only to this one, but I think another one in another city as well.
Correct, correct. If you go inside, you'll see Loma Linda memorabilia, photographs, a great painting of the old and the new, so.
Yeah.
It's quite the spectacle to see.
Yeah, it's pretty neat.
They haven't been in our community that long, or were they at a different location?
Probably four, five years.
Five-ish, I'm thinking.
If, you know, and it's, if you get a chance, go in there and have lunch or dinner or grab something for takeout, because the murals.
Phil Duper sandwich?
Yeah, yeah, no. There's a, there's a mural with the medical center and some other stuff, it's, it's pretty neat, so.
I'll check it out.
Again, shameless plug.
Based on this, I'll check it out.
And they do give back to the community, so it is a great program.
Good, good, now we need to approach Subway and a few other restaurants in town.
To maybe get like a subway train, I'm not sure what they do.
Whatever, whatever, as long as it gives the city money, it's okay with me.
Thank you. Okay, Councilmember Gendol had a question on six B.
Yep, thank you. So my main question regarding this one is, we have three different bids, one of them is four and a half times larger than the one that we're opting with, are we sacrificing material value, quality? Why is there a four and a half times difference?
This is Conrad. The, the winning bid is, was provided by our current vendor, so they're familiar with our system, our infrastructure, when this, it's not just a piece of equipment, it's going to have to be all the routing tables, everything that goes with that for the transition, so they're already managing that and have that on hand, where they don't have to recreate it, another vendor would have to. And they're also local, and I think the other vendor is from out of the area, so all of that kind of combines to let us use the guy that knows us and leverage that knowledge for the price.
Great, sounds good, and they've been serving us long, assuming?
They have done an excellent job for us, actually, I don't know if Kyle is in the booth or Sean, but Sean is their employee, Kyle is our employee, and so we work that closely with them, I'm not sure which one of, which one of those employees is doing the work tonight, but odds are one of them is right there.
Thank you.
Okay, so we did have a motion on the consent calendar. A motion and a second, Madam Clerk.
Councilman Leonard, oh, excuse me, the motion is to approve the items on the consent calendar. Councilman Leonard.
Hi.
Councilman Gendol.
Hi.
Councilman Rixby.
Yes.
Mayor Per temporary Daley.
Hi.
Mayor Duper.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you very much.
Okay, moving on to old business, item number nine, to continue our discussion on possibly changing school districts out of the, the west end of our community. So I'm not sure, did we?
So I think we can finally make a motion, since it's on the agenda this time around. Everyone should have some of the signatures from the community that is affected by this change in front of them. So just to reiterate, we currently have a portion of Loma Linda which falls into the Colton School District, the residents of part of this area would like to transfer over to the Redland School District. And one of the roles that we can play for, for our citizens is we can start the conversation with a different authority involved and advance it for them, then it will be up to them to, to analyze the situation and make a decision of whether the two school districts can agree for the change. So for our part, I'd like to move that we advance this to the Lasco and the Colton Unified School District and Redland Unified School District for a boundary change of basically the western part of Loma Linda.
Before we, I would like to have our city attorney, who did look into it a little bit, explain the procedures on, on how we see changing the boundary of the school district can be done. Rich?
Good evening. I think you should each have a copy of the pages from the state handbook on school district reorganization, and there's also a diagram which you should have, which is quite complicated, but the simple part, the easy part, is your part. And really, there's only one thing that our city council has jurisdiction to do, and that is to initiate the process, if you so choose, by adopting a simple resolution by a majority vote, which is then transmitted to the San Bernardino County Committee on School District Reorganization.
Are you on this, because I'm not tracking where you're at?
Yes, that's the diagram I was referencing.
Okay, so where are we?
We're at the very top left.
Initiated by voter.
It says initiated by voter petition or local agency resolution. That's where the city council, the city of Loma Linda steps in, if you choose to, you may adopt a resolution and forward that to the county committee, and they take it from there, there's no further role by the city council of Loma Linda.
But we don't need to.
You're not required to do that, the, there could be a voter petition initiated, and.
Do we have that?
Well, the only, the only problem with those, if you look at the first page of that document, those look like pretty monumental options, and you, it would require a petition signed by at least 10% of the registered voters of the entire school district.
Oh.
Yeah, I mean, like, those seem almost impossible odds, but.
I thought it was 10% of the involved homes.
I mean, well, the way it reads, I mean, unless I'm wrong, the way it reads there.
I think you're correct. But that petition would not come to the city council, it would go directly to the county committee.
That just, that seems pretty daunting, and based on, I'm not sure who did, I don't know if Councilmember Gendol did the signature gathering over here, but it looks like we have a.
May I ask you a question before we get too deep in the weeds on this?
Yes, sir.
What, what is the incentive to do this? Because when I first read this, what's occurring to me is we're looking at the far west end of our city boundaries, and we're wanting to link them up with the far eastern part of a school district, or eastern boundary to the school district. So if you could help me understand what the incentive for this is.
Would that be a question geared towards me?
Yes, I'm sorry.
So I've looked from the resident's point of view, there are two incentives, first of all, it's Redland Unified School District, and I believe the residents have an opinion that they, their, that their children would be better served with the Redland Unified School District, and it would join the majority of the city and be more unified with, with their neighbors, friends, they would all be attending the same school district. The second, I believe, is a concern regarding the taxes that are paid towards the Colton Unified School District and the Redland Unified School District, and difference between those two.
All right, so just, if, if I understood you, the first reason is that they, these children have friends that are in a different school, even though they live near the neighborhoods that are in the Colton School District, is that the issue? So that friends can be in school with friends?
That's part of it, but also Redland Unified School District is ranked higher than the Colton Unified School District.
Based upon what? I mean, you're telling me something I didn't know, but what, what would the basis of their higher ranking be, and where would I be able to find that?
We can pull up the test scores between the two school districts.
Sounds like it's just their perception, anyway.
That's my concern.
Whether it's right or not, that's their perception.
Yeah, that's my concern.
And then the second part is, and I was actually, made aware of this last time we talked about it, I was unaware that you actually pay more in the Colton School District than you do in Redlands.
What, what are we talking about? What's the differential in taxes between the two school districts? Because I was also not aware of that.
So City Manager, I'm not sure if you have a better answer, however, from comparisons that were done by the residents themselves, they saw a $4,000 per year difference.
Per year?
Per year, and that's, again, comparisons that were, that was done by the residents themselves.
Wow, I mean, I have to admit, that sounds pretty extreme.
I'm not sure that that can be correct.
I don't think that's correct, because your property tax isn't even $4,000 in, in the average home on that side of town, the entire property tax, but I can tell you, having lived in both districts while serving on this council, I, the construction fees, so if you want to build a new home, the construction fees were somewhere around 1.5 times higher for, for Colton.
Really?
Yes.
Just for construction fees?
Just the school fees for, for a permit to get a house construction. It's not, it's not that they, it costs more to build anything, it's just that Colton has, has levied higher fees.
Yeah, correct.
Well, I don't think it's really matters in many ways to us, their perception is that they would like to be in the other school district, their perception is that it's less money, I don't think it really matters to us to get in whether we think that that is a proper perception, one way or the other, the question is, shall we do this? And so I guess one thing we have, I have to ask is, what's the impact to us, to a city, if we do this? Is there any, is there any impact one way or the other? It's this no, it's no more fees for us, it's no more cost for us, or anything like that?
I can guarantee you that next time I go to a meeting, when this comes up before the county board of supervisors, I'm going to get cornered by at least two of them, if not three of them, wondering, what are you guys doing this for? And, and I don't want to depend on perception, I want to have some kind of data that, that tells me this makes sense.
I would say the data is that they want it, it's cheaper for them, and they think it's a better thing. That's my data, and besides, I don't think those supervisors, they have other things on their mind right now.
They do, but, they do, but.
At the end of the day, I think they, that area, regardless of what their perceptions are, it's something that the majority of voters in that side want, so if we want to listen to them and further this, I think that would be the, be the impetus for us.
I didn't understand.
I think you're saying the same thing I was saying, basically, it's, they want it, and it's something good for them, and he wants to represent their interests. I personally care more about what our voters and our citizens think in our city more than I care about running into a county supervisor and what they do.
That's a fair point, but. The answer that I would give them is the same one I did before, which is popular sovereignty, you know, if the people want to move, I support that, the same reason why I support keeping Scotch Lane, even though Scotch Lane is difficult for us to serve, popular sovereignty says we're going to keep it.
Hello?
They can't hear us.
Yeah, we can hear you.
Oh, okay.
You're kind of interrupting our meeting.
Yeah, this is not to sue the under dire professor from Loma Linda. What is happening over here is we are paying all the utilities to the city of Loma Linda, that is number one, and the taxes for the Colton School District is much higher, if you compare it, I have two properties, one in Loma Linda, which is with Redland School District, and my home where I'm living, it is with the Colton High School, the difference is almost $3,000 per year, on one home, I'm paying $6,000 to $6,000, the other one is $9,000 plus, and I can prove it tomorrow, I have both the properties, property tax.
But I don't know the differential values of those two properties, to know how much of that is because of the school district.
No, they are almost the same, I compared it, you can do it, you can, if you look into this aspect, so you will know about it.
I don't, I don't doubt that there's a differential.
You and Colton, Loma Linda, same five bedrooms, both properties.
Yeah, we're, we're actually acknowledging that there is a difference, the magnitude of it, we don't think is important, the fact that it's a higher cost is enough.
No, we make a comparison, clearly it is due to the school district.
That's fine, that's fine, we'll agree with you, we'll, we'll say you're true, you're correct.
More revenue to the city of Loma Linda, we are paying all the utilities to city of Loma Linda, but only this property tax due to school district with Colton, we are paying much higher fees.
Okay, thank you, thank, and I didn't catch your name, sir, but thank you very much for, for sharing and representing. I think for the most part, we're mostly in agreeance, I'm, I'm not sure that.
Well, I'm, I'm, I guess I'm disagreeing with Councilman Leonard on this, and that is, I need to see some evidence, I need to know what we're talking about, and not listen to one or two or three people, and then shoot this forward for a fairly involved process that we're not even sure we would be able to handle, when you talk about 10% of the registered voters of the entire school district.
That's not required if we pass a resolution.
Yeah, just to clarify that, once you pass the resolution, the matter goes to the, a different entity, it's not the Board of Supervisors, it's the San Bernardino County Committee on School District Reorganization, and I have never dealt with them, I don't know anything more about them, but they have a fairly limited scope of jurisdiction, including determining district boundaries, and they are the entity that would do the analysis and study and have public hearings, give notices, they'd work with the affected school district. give notices, they'd work with the affected school districts, and make a preliminary decision, then a final decision at some point, they would do the environmental work, and ultimately, it could go to an election of the affected homeowners.
Councilmember Jindal, would you like to introduce a motion?
Yes, and probably need some assistance with this one, City Attorney. So what would the appropriate motion be? Are we sending it to, or who would the next body be that we would recommend it to?
It pretty much lays it out here in the document, I'm not sure if you've got a chance to get a copy of this, probably not, since you're virtual.
Yeah, he did, he gave us the website, so we downloaded from there.
The motion would be to adopt a resolution of the City Council, the City of Loma Linda, recommending to the San Bernardino County Committee on School District Reorganization that they proceed to study and take action to amend the school district boundaries, and we would need to be specific on the area. So perhaps the best thing would be to come back at our next meeting with a draft of a resolution with the necessary details for your action at that time.
And I would feel much better about that, as well as some kind of documentation of the rationale for this, based on tax differential and whatever the other reasons were. I appreciate the desire and wish, I don't have any hangup against it, I don't like making decisions when I don't have evidence, it's all hearsay. And so that's one of the bases of my opposition.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
My question is, do we have any information, which I don't think we do, about whether there is some kind of a capitalized account based on, you know, like when, for example, when you buy into a sewer system, you can't just join and pay $100 a month, you've got to pay $50,000 for your share of that thing. So, my question is, is this kind of thing going to require the Colton School District to shell over, you know, $5 million to Redlands to buy into their school system and disinvest themselves? And if so, this thing will go nowhere.
Well, my thinking along, is along the lines with Councilmember Leonard, that if our residents in those neighborhoods ask us to do this for them, you know, we've talked about this 100 times up here, we serve them, we work for them, there's no impact that appears to be to us, but where I think you're going, and I absolutely agree, is there a hidden impact that none of us know about? And we start the process on something, something like what happened out in Ritchie Canyon before, we start the process on something we think is innocuous, and then all of a sudden, there's a, there's some little hidden thing we didn't know about. So, I was thinking we would have all that detailed, and I'm not sure if we can get that, I don't know if we have to reach out to that, that committee?
Well, I did reach out to, both Councilman Jindal and I were in the same office, my office, I did reach out to Redlands School District Superintendent and Office, and I did talk to them. They said it's very difficult to do, because first of all, Colton School District will lose some funding, so there's some revenue, and that money can be transferred to Redlands School District, and then both districts, just like annexation, Colton have to be willing to give it, and then Redlands School District had to be willing to accept it, so...
All of which, though, really is not up to us, and...
Yeah, but that's, I don't buy that. We are elected officials that are paid to do our homework and make some evidence-based decisions, not just to listen to proposals from anybody that walks in off the street. And so I'm sure there's a lot more homework that's been done than we are seeing or aware of, I'm confident of that. But I think we're rushing to judgment on something, just because, you know, we want everybody to be happy with us. And I think we have to be measured in how we approach these things, and collaborate with citizens, and not just make happy votes. I don't, I don't know that this is a bad idea, I think it very well may be a good idea, but I have no real basis for that.
Okay, fair enough. So what are the next steps? Do we need a motion to get the draft proposal, or is that just direction to staff?
Well...
Draft a resolution, rather.
I don't have the detailed information as to the affected area, unless Councilman Jindal has that, we could throw together a resolution, but, yes, my recommendation would be to get that information, put together a draft, have that in front of you for action at the next meeting, but if it's the council's pleasure, we can make do with the information we have and try to...
Well, just for purposes of efficiency, could we get that information and have a draft resolution prepared? If we decide to move forward, we can do it, we don't have to put it off again for another month? Does that sound like an idea to everybody, or? I'm, I'm, that's trying to split the baby, right? So, we get the documentation, everything to help everybody feel comfortable with what we're doing, and then have something prepared so we can move that forward. I assume, from what we hear, this is going to be a long, protracted process, anyway, I just would rather not it be on our plate, let's put it on whoever's plate that owns it.
Well, if that's the pleasure of the council, we can, I'm looking at the clerk, we sometimes do draft documents based upon the input received in the council meeting. It would be a fairly simple resolution, because we don't have a lot of information to put into it, but we would simply say, whereas we've received the request from a number of citizens in the city as to a certain area of the city, which Councilman Jindal can perhaps provide to the clerk, and based upon that input, we're hereby requesting that the County Committee proceed to study and, and take action to change those boundaries from one to the other district.
It actually sounds like we did have some information, because the City Manager and Mr. Jindal talked to, talked to some folks, it'd probably be better if we'd have written that down, because that would give you something to see.
Well, I'm not looking for just something, I want to see maps. So I want to know, are, you know, based on what this request is, are there two or three blocks over that are going to be left with Colton, and these get moved to Rivers, or Redlands? And we didn't even know it, because we didn't have the information, I want to see some maps. I also want to see some documentation, I mean, the testimony that we heard indicated there's a fairly remarkable differential in the tax costs between the two school districts, that's significant. But I need to know that's the case, you know, that it's not inflated or underrepresented, and then make a decision based on that. Otherwise, I just see that there could be landmines in here that we don't know anything about, because we don't have any kind of evidence. And, I mean, in research, I learned a long time ago, quality's the standard and time's the variable. Doesn't mean you want to delay and take longer than you need to, but it also means you don't rush into it. And so, it's not going to change anything this particular school year, I'm assuming, so I think we probably have the, have some time on our hands, but I agree with you, though, Mayor, that we want to move this along, so people know we're being responsive, but I don't think it's unreasonable at all to say, we need some documentation, so that we can present a reasonable resolution that we'd be comfortable with.
That's fair.
So, to echo what the mayor said, in regards to the committee that's going to be looking at this, it doesn't matter in their respect of what the rationale is, so if we want to gather more documentation, if we want maps, we can do that for ourselves, but when we're sending this down the road to the next committee that's going to look at it, from their perspective, right, this is something that the citizens have asked for, they don't necessarily, it's not relevant to them of what reason it is.
Now, just, I would note, on the petition that was received tonight, it does reference the Laurel Heights neighborhood, and it has specific addresses listed. It seems that, I haven't counted, but the majority of the properties listed were in favor of the move, so we could reference the Laurel Heights and these specific addresses as an attachment to the resolution.
Well, real quick, the only issue I have with this, I'm very familiar with that community, that community is pretty much walled off, it's, it's not really attached to anything else. That's the, that's the community that's across the street from Loma Linda Springs, the senior housing complex, you're familiar with that, Ron? So, so to say we have an accounting of everything that's there, I'm 100% aboard with that. My challenge is, as Dr. Rigsby brought up last council meeting, that there are also communities further to the north, or houses, or streets, or parts of our city, that are also in the Colton School District.
Yeah, it depends on where you live on University Avenue, whether you're in Colton School District or Redlands School District.
Right, so I think we have to...
I was, I was on, in the Colton School District, and I was about a third of the way from Barton Road to Campus Street, so...
So...
There's a chunk there that's Colton, and it's completely arbitrary.
Right, my feeling is we need to poll those residents also, because if we're going to support, or not support, we need to know if those residents want to do the same thing, because it would be unfortunate to say, we move this community out, or we advocate for that, and then three years down the road, we get another petition, and we didn't even realize, because this, and I appreciate the work that was done on this, and I do believe a majority of people in this, in Laurel Heights want this to happen, so I'm good, I will support that, I'll push forward, but I think we need to capture the, everything, does that make sense? You guys good with that, or no?
Well, if there were a consensus to do that, we could simply adopt a resolution that says, all Loma Linda residential properties be transferred from Colton School District to Redlands.
Somebody did the homework to do this, somebody went and gathered signatures, I'm not sure if Councilmember Jindal did that, or was aware, you know, or participated, but I'd like to somehow CS canvas those other neighborhoods too, and find out, do we do it all at once? Maybe they don't want, I mean, I don't know. That plays, it definitely plays in, I, it supports having more information...
I didn't, sir, we went from door to door.
You took the words out of my mouth, I was just about to say that. I just, I understand what you're saying, Mr. Daley, but I just can't stand this paralysis by analysis thing. These people want to do this, if the rest of the community wants to do it too, they can ask for it. If they didn't ask for it, it seems to me, we could have just what you said. I mean, if there's no financial impact, and there's no downside to the city, if the entire Loma Linda population wants to go in the Redlands School District, why would I stand in their way because I want to study it for three more months? In my mind, it seems like we could make a proposal here, or whatever, resolution, that says, this community, we're more than willing to do that, and in fact, any other community in Loma Linda that wants to move into Redlands School District, we support that, and then it's got to go through 10,000 other committees, and I don't see why we need to sit here and put it off for another month, and another month, and another month, while we talk about it, before it can even get started in some other big round of committees. That's my opinion on the thing. So I would like to do a resolution along the lines of what our City Attorney just said.
Is that a motion?
I would just throw out one other side of that, and that is that, if we do include additional neighborhoods or areas, there's a chance that that expands the voting base for this decision to a group that may not favor it, so I have no idea whether that would be the case or not, I'm just pointing out that, in most cases, under this flow chart, you end up with an election of all the affected property owners, so that's just a thought to keep in mind.
Well, I, just using a little bit of statistics, with your permission, Dr. Daley, this was a list of pretty much everybody that they could find in that neighborhood, and almost everybody signed it, so I think it's going to pass, if it ever comes to a vote, but I don't, I don't know that it'll ever get to that point, because that's the end of the process. The beginning of the process is getting Colton, or the middle of the process is getting Colton School District to agree to this, which I think is a quixotic desire, I don't think that's going to happen, but...
I agree. So, one more question.
Yes, sir.
Could we approve this, and then direct the City Manager to send notification to other parts of Loma Linda that is not in the Redlands School District, and say, just to let you know, we, these people asked that reputed, if you're interested in this, let us know, and then we could, at that point, look at that, and then forward that on also? I mean, they may say, no, we don't want to do that.
Right. So where I stand right now, I'm in total agreeance with your thoughts, and I'd be willing to vote that way, and we can, we can do a resolution tonight and move on down the road. The other side of me just wonders, are there other people out there that want to be included? And so I don't know. And like you said, they should affirmatively come forward and do that on their own, if they're interested, so they may not know that that's even an option. So, I'm not sure we're going to get to...
Look at this, is required, under item two, is required a hearing, so, so they have to send out a letter, a notice to all the property that will be impacted by this.
Right, but our petition so far, our proclamation so far would be for Laurel Heights, unless we wanted to just include everybody. I mean, I leave that up to the, to the maker of the motion, but...
Well, I've actually seen the map, and there's just, it's just a little snip of the western side of Loma Linda. I say just do the whole thing, you know, don't just do Laurel Heights, because we'll end up doing it twice.
That's, I agree, that's, that's what I'm saying.
It's not much, it's like somebody just snipped the western side of Loma Linda and put it in Colton.
Okay, so what if...
With zero regard for the boundary.
So what if, so you're recommending everything over in that area, not just Laurel Heights?
Yeah, if you're going to do it, do the whole western side of, just every part of Loma Linda that's in the Colton School District is included in our resolution.
Okay, so if we did that, then, let's say, this other section, wherever you're saying over by University something, says, no, we don't want that, we want to stay where we are, would they come to us, and then we would have to forward that on to this commission, or would they tell the commission themselves, or what would happen?
I think that would happen.
It would be part of the public hearing, there are many different steps, and all we are, all we are is the one who pushes the little snowball at the top of the hill.
Initiator, we're the initiator. Could, okay, so...
Given, given this high take rate to signatures, I don't think that anybody in my old neighborhood would object to the move.
So here's my concern with that, if we expand the area, which is going to be two, three times the size of what it is currently, does that make it harder for the current area that has come up with this, and they're pushing for it, does it make it harder for them to join the Redlands School District, while we're not sure if the other part wants to or not? So we basically closed off their chances of moving into the district that they want, while not even knowing if the other part wants it?
Well, you, I understand what you're saying, but my, my comment would be Laurel Heights might be an island, and that isn't going to work at all. It would have to be contiguity with the rest of the Redlands School District, I would think.
I would assume these governing bodies would notice that already, and they would, because, I'm assuming the border, I mean, is probably like Waterman.
So, so I think what we're doing is we're talking ourselves into Dr. Daley's position.
Right, so the connect, so, in regards to this property, right, the connection would be basically the Loma Linda Springs apartment, and then that's basically where it ends, so if they were going to be included, that's how they would connect Laurel Heights with the Redland, with the Redlands Unified School District? But I think that's also...
Well, Loma Linda Springs, Loma Linda Springs is not indicated in your list here, but there should not be any school-aged children at Loma Linda Springs either, so.
Which is, which is my point, right? It doesn't affect them, but they would serve as that connection bridge between Colton and Redland. But again, I don't think that's a decision that falls upon us. It would be for the next body to ascertain.
I'm into continuity, so I think, I don't, I don't understand the idea of splitting any city. I think, you know, either we should all be, as Loma Linda should be in one or the other. And I do know, and this is not any, any remark on the city of Colton, because we're talking about school districts here, which we all know have absolutely nothing to do with cities, they're very autonomous. We've had our own experiences with the Redland School District in the years past, but our, but our relationships have greatly improved. So school districts are much like Sacramento, they do whatever they want. But this has nothing to do with the city of Colton, which we have a great relationship with, but I'm, I'm good with whatever direction you guys want to go, but I'm leaning towards, if you make a motion, I'll support it. But we have a motion on the table, we just don't have a second.
So if we concluded, I'm sorry, if we included these other sections that Dr. Rigsby was talking about, if, and we forwarded on this resolution, if they didn't want that, they didn't ask for it, and let's just say for some reason they didn't want that, what would be their redress then?
They vote no.
Probably either appearing at whatever hearings, or voting no if.
It would be down the road, they would appear at those hearings down there?
They would, they would go under preliminary hearing, and then the public hearing, and then the notice of the hearing, and all these places they could complain about it.
So they could all go down there and say, we don't want this, and so forth.
And then they can vote no in the final vote.
Could the commission at that point decide, well, it looks like Laurel Heights people want it, but the university people don't, so we're going to go ahead and do it for the Laurel Heights people and not university?
Most of these commissions have dictatorial powers, so yes, they probably could.
If you, if you look at the procedure on page two, down at the bottom, before number nine, it says, for all other territory transfers, if the county committee approves the transfer, the county superintendent must call an election in the area determined by the county committee. So the committee could alter the boundaries and decide what, what group, what not, whatever, but whatever they push forward to the superintendent, then he has to call an election either way, and these people have to vote.
So what's the motion on the floor, right?
Probably have to, he was still trying to get the correct language from the attorney,
Yeah, I guess the question is whether, which area you want to go forward with tonight. Is there a consensus as to the area of Laurel Heights only, or a consensus to include all Loma Linda properties that are currently within the Colton School District? That would be the question.
I could go either way with that. On one hand, you can say they didn't ask for it, so why include them? On the other hand, I like your argument that we all stay with one district, we don't split our fire services up into a bunch of different things.
It's not just likable, it's the most credible argument, I think. Contiguity of the whole city is the most credible argument. I think it's the only credible argument.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm in favor of that, and just moving right ahead with the whole thing.
Mr. Jindal, are you good with that language or not?
Yeah, that totally works. So I believe the motion would be to direct staff to write up a resolution to move all, all area within Loma Linda that is currently in the Colton Unified School District to the San Bernardino County, what was the committee, sorry?
Well, your petition is to move to the Redland School District, and then we just submit the resolution to that governing body.
Yes, so that county, San Bernardino County Committee on.
It's the, it's the Committee on School District Reorganization, which I'd never heard of before.
It probably, it probably never meets.
Yeah, it probably doesn't even have any members, they'll have to, they'll have to form it because we're sending them business.
All right. For the San Bernardino County Committee on School District Organization, to move all areas within the city of Loma Linda currently within the Colton Unified School District, to reorganize into the Redland Unified School District. Does that sound like a complete motion?
And a direction to staff to work with city attorney to formalize the resolution and forward that to the committee. We will bring that back to the next council meeting for ratification as well.
Between Barbara and Rich, they'll make it sound great.
Okay.
Is there going to be any additional evidence of why we're making this decision? Will there be maps?
Yes, I could do a map.
Documentation of the tax.
Based on this motion, I don't think so.
Councilman Lenard's worried about paralysis through analysis, which is bunk, in my view. I'm worried about shoot-ready aim. I don't want to make decisions before I have some sense of why the decision is, is appropriate and justified. So.
I can have maps, for sure, but, but that's about it, so.
And we could attach the petition that we have before us for Laurel Heights, but as far as any analysis of the impact, that would be up to the districts to provide that.
Yeah, no, and that's not our role at this point, I understand that.
Hi, I have someone from the public that wants to speak.
Okay.
Hi, my name is Dr. Spencer, and I'm an epidemiologist and professor in public health at Loma Linda, and also with San Bernardino County. And one piece of advice I might give you guys is, you may actually do better taking time just to analyze a little bit and postponing submitting something. I think if you submit right now, you're more likely to get a no versus you wait a little bit, because the schools are overwhelmed facing the pandemic. So if you, it might be prudent to buy your time, wait a little bit. One of my kids is in the Redlands Unified School District here in, at Bryn Mawr. It's kind of panic mode, right? And same with, I just emailed the Board of Supervisors today for a number of different counties, looking at the COVID rates over the weekend. Here in San Bernardino County, we just had 1,400 new cases. We're about to explode with COVID, which is going to again further push us back into the purple, overwhelming the system. So my advice would be, maybe take a little time, get your maps, whatever you want, and then move forward and submit, but just give a little time.
Okay, thank you for your input. We have a motion, and did you second it?
I will.
Second. So we have a motion and a second on the floor. I will call for the vote.
If we could have the motion read to us, please.
Okay, the motion is, correct me if I'm wrong, to direct staff to prepare a resolution to be presented to the San Bernardino County Community for School District Reorganization, to move all areas in the city of Loma Linda that are currently in the Colton School District to the Redland School District, and provide additional information regarding the, the maps and tax differences, what we can find, and bring to the next city council meeting, which would be December 8.
Okay, just a point of clarification, Mr. Mayor, a, a yes vote is to ask that the resolution and documentation be provided. It is not a vote to approve anything beyond that.
I, I think, I think the motion is to send the resolution right now, but it sounded like staff wanted to bring it back in December for ratification. So there would be another vote then in December if we did that. But I think the maker of the motion and the second needs to clarify.
I, I just always get a little nervous if I don't have the final document in front of you for action, but if there were an urgency, we could do it that way and have it on the consent calendar, so you can see what we sent off at the next meeting, and if you don't like it, you could change it or rescind it.
So clarification from the maker?
If the clerk is okay with that.
I'm, I'm fine, but I got the impression that we were going to draft the resolution and bring it back to the next council meeting for final consideration before sending it.
That was my impression.
That was my understanding. Councilman Jindal, would that be correct?
There, so just a show of hands, is there any urgency? Do we want to see the resolution? This is going to be a multi-month, if not a multi-year, process. How does everyone else on the council feel? Do they want to see it, or can we just send it, and then the staff bring us what they sent? Because I was under the impression we were just sending it.
Sending it. His motion is to send it, he.
Well, I've, I've never seen us just tell someone to draft and send a resolution. We've always approved the wording.
Okay, so if we can please bring it back at the next meeting, where we can all finalize, finalize the, the letter.
So it'll come back for final ratification approval.
So he's admitting his motion, so I'm in.
And if Councilman Jindal or Lenard can help me understand the urgency in this, because I sense a real urgency, and I'm not comprehending.
I think that we have a duty to be somewhat responsive to our people and not just continue to punt things down the road. You said earlier.
Has anybody suggested we just keep punting down the road?
I think you asked me a question, I'm trying to answer it.
Okay, fair enough.
You said earlier that it's our job as councilmen to weigh options and make decisions. And decisions aren't always, I need more data, I need more data, I need more data. In my mind, there's enough data there in the fact that the people want it, it's cheaper for them, the longer we wait to do that, the longer it goes down the road. I mean, let's put it in terms you understand. So let's say you want to do something to your house, and I say, you know, I just don't know why he wants that wall there. It may be, seems like it's a little expensive of a wall, he could go to Home Depot and get a little cheaper. Let's put it off till next month. You know, I'm being facetious, but at some point, it's time to move on, I think. And in my mind, people want it, there's no impact, it's better for them, at least they perceive it's better to them. It's got to go through multiple hoops down the road, where everybody whose job is to do to study all this, but we want to study it all ourselves before we send it out to other people to study it. So that's my answer to your question. I think it's time to get the ball rolling, and then if there's a lot of hoops it has to drop, blow them through, and I appreciate what our, our citizens said earlier about waiting, and so on and so forth, but it's not like this is going to go tomorrow, and then they're all going to flood into the Redland School District tomorrow. It's got to go through a lot of hoops, and probably these meetings may not even get going because of COVID or whatever.
Potentially talking a year or more.
Yeah, but that doesn't mean we can't just get things in the queue and get them going. So in my mind, there's no reason to wait. I don't see any need for any new data, in my mind. I can see why you might want it, so that's why we have votes, I guess, but.
Yeah, but my, my concern is, as the, what qualifies as continuity in this council, having been here 14 years, I've never seen an R-2020-26 passed without having a number on it. I mean, we don't even know what resolution this is. I don't, I don't know that we can pass a resolution unless we know what it is.
No, I'm totally fine with it. I'm fine with it coming back next month, and us voting on it at the end of the month. At next month, or like.
Yeah, and then we can get as much data as anybody wants in the meantime.
So we have an opportunity in December to bring this back and either vote it or not vote it with that additional data, and it'll be written down, and it'll be ready to go.
Right.
I think that sounds like we maybe have a consensus on that. So that's really more direction to staff than, I don't think we need a, do we need a motion to create the resolution?
I don't think we do.
I don't think we do either.
I, I think we're getting the direction to bring it back at the next meeting with formal resolution and any additional information that can be acquired.
Okay. Is everybody good with that? Okay, and as much information as we can possibly get in that timeframe. Okay, moving on to reports of council members. Reports of officers?
I have a question.
Oh, go ahead, sir.
Do we used to have somebody going around the city and looking at different houses that have weeds overgrown and so forth?
No, we, we do have a court enforcement that do that. So you can email me or text me, I can have a think.
It seems like I've seen a little more of those than, than around recently.
And you will have more, because it's just rained this weekend.
Okay, I'll get you some addresses.
Yes, sir.
Did we get the stoplight in yet for California, and was it orange?
No, because I'm still working on the, the right of way. So we got one person that signed back, so it's looking good.
Okay, any reports of officers? Seeing none, we will adjourn the city council and open up the housing agenda. Are there any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
Any comments from the public? Seeing none, we will move on to the scheduled items. The consent calendar is there for anybody's movement. Okay, we have a first, and a second. Madam Clerk?
The motion is to approve the items on the housing authority consent calendar. Councilman Jindal?
Aye.
Councilman Lenard?
Aye.
Councilman Rigsby?
Yes.
Mayor Prettemory Daley?
Aye.
Aye.
Mayor Duper?
Yes.
Passes, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any reports of council members or officers? Seeing none, we will adjourn the housing authority and move into the successor agency agenda. Are there any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
Any comments from the public? Seeing none, we will move into the consent calendar.
I'll move it.
We have a first.
Second.
And a second. Madam Clerk? Excuse me. I'm sorry.
The motion is to approve the items on the consent calendar on the successor agency agenda. Councilman Jindal?
Aye.
Councilman Lenard?
Yes.
Councilman Rigsby?
Yes.
Mayor Prettemory Daley?
Aye.
Mayor Duper?
Yes.
Thank you.
And Mr. City Manager?
Yes, I just want to give you an update on the sales of the property in the area D. The, you know, after the city council approved selling it, we, we submitted to the county of San Bernardino Oversight Board, and they did approve it. So now with the state of finance, and then they have 40-day to review the application, so. We'll get the State Department financed now.
Thank you, thank you very much. Okay, if there's nothing else, we will adjourn, and we'll see you next month.